Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Madam Mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor.
Morning, everyone. Okay, so we are at a four-point agenda here for the budget workshop today. We're going to hit transportation.
Certax and Sunjin is going to lead us in this one as well.
All right, transportation, certex program. So, high level, we'll talk about revenues again. So, when looking at what's coming in year-over-year compared to '23, we do see a bit of a slight decline in revenues compared to the previous year. So, our fiscal year '24 projections are down 1% compared to '23 actuals. So, that kind of helps us build the coming five-year program, '25 through '29, and I'll talk about that more in the following slide. Quick update, Oversight Board did meet August 2nd, August 9th. They reviewed in great detail the proposed projects and expenditures in this five-year program. And so, mobility advancement program administrator Gretchen Cassini and her staff coordinate those budget workshops that they put on for the Oversight Board. So, the fiscal year '25 recommended budget, proposed projects and expenditures were reviewed and approved as eligible, both for fiscal year '25, next slide, as well as the five-year plan. So, they took a look at both of those. And we'll look at these numbers in the next couple of slides. All right, so revenues again. As I touched upon, fiscal year '24 forecast currently is down 1% compared to '23 actuals. So, for '25, what we did is kept it flat compared to '24. We did budget a 2.7% revenue inflator, as we typically do. One thing I did want to note, in the '24 through '28 capital program, we did start to budget interest earnings, as we have again. However, this assumes a conservative interest rate outlook, and this assumes increased spending as big projects come up in the next couple of years. All right, so high level, overall, certex revenue made up of both the sales tax and interest earnings, budgeted at 95%. This brings in projection of $2.67 billion over five years. This leverages almost $1 billion in non-local funding, federal and state grants. This, the bulk of this, is budgeted for the Port-to-Port Light Rail project that's budgeted in fiscal year 2026, which is included in the transit capital line. Other than Port-to-Port, there's also a few bus rapid transit projects budgeted in there as well. We continue to budget public works program, which includes fiber optics, adaptive signal, road capacity expansion. We have a bit more detail on some of these other lines. I did want to point out Broward Commuter Rail South had a slight cost increase. As you know, in fiscal year '24, we did budget the total project cost. So, right now, it stands at a little over $300 million. Okay, we'll go to the next slide. A portion of the budget is there to administer the program, the transfer to transit operating. This assumes that primo services, a couple primo services are coming online in the later years. Typically, the first year are your startup costs, where they're getting everything set up, no revenue. And typically, the second year, you start to see revenue come in, which helps offset those costs. Did want to point out the bottom three lines. This makes up the total appropriation for municipal projects. And when you total this all up, it is over 10% of projected certex revenue. Another short and sweet, and that is transportation certex program.
Yep. Thank you, Sunjin.
Yeah, thank you so much. Just one quick question. Can anybody give us an update on the, how the Third Amendment to the ILA is doing? Because that's obviously important. I know the BCCMA, maybe we're waiting for them to respond, but Monica, where were you at? Because we need to speed that along the best we can.
So, there was a conversation at the BCCMA, it was two weeks ago? My sense of time is a little off, but I think it's in the last two, three weeks, where they, where they met and discussed it. We had to, the eve of that discussion and vote, because they sent something over to us on a Friday night. We were going to meet on, I think, a Wednesday. So, we had to quickly put something together to respond, because it was, what we felt they were going to be voting on was absent a few significant issues that we had talked about as a, from administration and the MAP team and, and the municipality subgroup at BCCMA. So, we put all that on the record. We had, actually had Gretchen, Michael, and Lorette all at that BCCMA meeting to make sure that the county's position was, was clearly articulated to the cities, so they understood where we were. I think, you know, the ball's in their court now. We're waiting on something back from them. They did take an official vote, if you will, but it was more of a, what I understand, kind of a starting point, with not all of the details worked out on what would be included in that Third Amendment. I think we're a lot closer, but they had a very ambitious, in my opinion, expectation of when that will all be, you know, kind of wrapped up. So, one of the big components that they were concerned about or want to see happen is to pull out the community shuttle funding out of the quote-unquote 10%. And, and as I think I've shared with, with some of you, when we've had these conversations individually, is the, the transportation system is currently under a comprehensive operational analysis period right now. And as you well know, you know, the whole system takes into consideration the community shuttle piece as well, because that's part of our entire system. So, to pull or to even contemplate pulling that funding out is very premature. We cannot even have any conversations, in my humble opinion, about the funding structure of community shuttle until we have that COA done, because it is interweaved with the whole system. But we continue to make progress on the things we can. And my suggestion was, and I shared this with the cities about two months or three months ago, when we were, you know, having them to analyze and bring back some recommendations, was let's, let's tackle everything else but that piece until the next year.
Right.
Because we just don't have that information yet. And so, that's where we are right now. We're waiting on another document back from, from the cities.
So, we don't have a timeline yet?
No, I mean, they were hoping to get something done around Christmas time. And that was the ambitious timeline, because...
There's just so many projects that are, that could be done.
Well, the, the program is not slowing down.
The ILA will be, provide a more liberal interpretation to get a lot more projects done, in my opinion.
And, and that is what we were pushing.
That's what's holding off. Some of my cities I represent are just so anxious to do those, but it's bogged down here. So, we just need to encourage, like you said. But it seems to never end.
If I'm not mistaken, Commissioner, I think what you might be referring to might be the, the, the circuit and...
Circuit, sidewalks, liberal interpretations and...
So, I think that from the...
Landscaping and, there's a lot of other items that we're more restricted on the second than the first.
So, and I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna just head that way. Thank you, Drew. I think that on those other areas, I think we are a lot more comfortable with where we're going. It's just the actual Third Amendment that I don't think bogs down some of those other interpretation issues, but Drew, please.
Yeah, I just asked Nathaniel, because we, I think, are in the process of preparing what we're calling a skinny amendment to deal with those issues that are imposing those limitations. And then we can address this, this other stuff that's far more complicated. It's going to take some time, but Nathaniel, I don't know...
That's good news, Drew.
Yeah, is that where we are in the timeframe for that? Maybe come up, is it okay if he, Mayor, if he comes up for 30 seconds? We won't prolong it.
We know you're not Stacy, it's okay.
We might confuse you with Stacy.
Stacy Ritter for the transportation certex program. What Drew just indicated is correct. Right now, we're still waiting for the BCCMA to provide us with a proposed term sheet based on the votes that they, they took two weeks ago. We're already working on, as was just described, a skinny amendment that deals with a number of the issues of which there is already been some general consensus. Things that deal with, again, to your point, some of those smaller projects, like the rehab and maintenance projects that don't have the ability to be funded currently under the Second Amendment, becoming a higher priority, as well as a variety of other smaller items, so that we can then deal with the results from the comprehensive operational analysis. And I hate to call it a Fourth Amendment, but a, a more comprehensive document that sort of reframes the entire relationship with the cities.
And Mayor and Commissioner, I mean, my philosophy on this, unless it's problematic, would be let's address as narrowly as we need to, to get rid of the biggest impediments, you know, most efficiently. And then if anything else is going to bog it down, that could be in a fourth, fifth, you know, we can come up with the Nineteenth Amendment at some point if we need to, but let's knock out these issues one at a time.
Skinny is good, and let's get skinny done, okay?
We all like skinny. Okay, so, wait, 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 hold on, hold on one second. Just let her...
Okay, Nathaniel, go ahead.
Nathaniel, I've been working with you on following up on what Commissioner Fisher is discussing, as you know, about trying to get some more money into the cities by virtue of providing them with matching grants, because the, you know, on a lot of times, they're eligible for state or federal grants, but have to come up with arbitrarily a third of the money, half the money. And, you know, my suggestion to you has been that the county make available to some of the smaller cities some of the, of the match. So, if they have to come up with a third, we'd come up with 16.6% or something like that, if they come up with that, to help the cities, in particular the smaller ones, achieve the matching grants. Is that one of the things that you're looking at, including in a so-called skinny amendment? I know you were surprised that the Broward City Managers Association didn't include that in their request, when we thought they were going to, when this was coming from them. But is that discreet issue, one of the things that you're looking at, including in the Fourth Amendment, which, by the way, is unreasonable search and seizure?
Third, Third Amendment.
Oh, but you were talking about a fourth.
Well, it's the skinny, then the third, the third. So, maybe three and a half, three-pointed.
And again, back in April, when county administration and the representatives from the BCCMA and MAP administration met, this was one of the items that was, was discussed at that point. It was also included in Monica's letter to the BCCMA just in advance of their meeting. Certainly is something that's going to be part of the discussion now, because as, as we've discussed, and as I think that everybody recognizes, the ability to provide access to funding to the municipalities off-cycle from the normal municipal capital projects' application cycle is, is critical to the program.
Specifically to help them get state and federal grants.
Exactly, to leverage those funds.
And if I might add onto that, please, and thank you, Nathaniel. So, first of all, I just say publicly, Nathaniel's been amazing to work with, and Drew and his team, thank you, because, you know, this is something that we've been trying to, you know, really wrangle down and, and to help the municipalities, because we want the money to get spending. And as you've seen here, it's recognizing and our interest earning. We are planning on getting these dollars out and more to, to, to all of, to the program. But to that end, that is exactly why I sent that letter, because the very thing that I thought could help them very much, they didn't even include it themselves. And, and we keep encouraging the municipalities, because, as you well know, because you all represent all 31 of them, you know, what might help, one, another city doesn't necessarily support that, or a different structure on something could help them better. So, you know, anything that we would just recommend to the cities, sometimes, you know, we, we kind of get in conflict. So, you know, the approach we have is to ask the cities to get on the same page and to make a recommendation to us that we can then react to. But at, at the same time, we want to make sure that the things that we know will be helpful are included, and that's why it was important to have that letter go out right before they met, because I want to make sure that the entire membership of BCCMA was aware of, of some of these other discussion points. So, Nathaniel's been extremely helpful in, in framing that conversation with the cities. And so...
Thank you. Thank you, Nathaniel. Do you have something for Nathaniel or separate, different?
No, yes.
For Nathaniel?
He might know more than Monica. All right? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'm not surprised.
On this topic, on this topic, you know that. Okay, I always say to her, she knows a lot, but she relied heavily on herself. So, let, a question, is there a project that the county is advocating for, county-wide, that we deem is important to transportation, moving people safely, their communities without sidewalks? Do you think that could be a project that the county really look at to see whether or not sidewalks could be one of those projects? Or maybe it is, but I'm saying we have to make sure it's mandated if we're going to offer matching funds or whatever we're doing, we have to make sure that there's a buy-in from the city. But I think the county should make sure we have sidewalks to walk on, to get to the bus stop, to get to the train station, to do all the things that we need to do. So, and I notice in certain communities, because they were built that way, senior communities in my city does not have sidewalks, and my seniors are walking now, they can't afford the cars. So, things are different, and sometimes we need to look at some of those issues.
So, Nathaniel's extremely smart, and I'm sure smarter than I, but I'm going to take this, this question, so...
I believe that one.
At least on this, right? Stop. So, so everything that you have just described is exactly what our certex program tries to tackle. So, everything you've mentioned, the connectivity county-wide, so everything from our transit system, our traditional transit system, to where it's expanding to, including VCR, the Broward Commuter Rail, our connectors, our automated people mover, there's a lot of touchpoints all over our county, including our, our county projects that include improvements that will include sidewalks, our municipal capital projects, the municipality projects that we were just talking about. Also, there'll be many times components of sidewalks that are in those programs, in those projects. And then we're also looking at the match pot that we're creating, that we're proposing to create, to help cities to, for leveraging down additional dollars from the state and feds. So, all of those things are included in that, but it's on a project-by-project basis, and then they get through, the cities, you know, are concurring with a process. Right now, we have a process for all projects to go through, that the cities have agreed to the process, because of the, the different touchpoints and the priorities given to different projects for improving mobility, connectivity, and the like. And so, there'll be sidewalks in those, and that's what Nathaniel was talking about, the skinny amendment, to make sure that, that those, that the flexibility is there for, for those types of efforts.
Quick response, Madam Mayor. I know what all of those, what we're doing there. I'm just saying, at some point in time, Broward County need to say, my communities need to be safe, and if there are no sidewalks, that could be a county priority and incentive offered to get that to become a priority for the cities. And that helps our project, is what I'm talking about. If you know, if it has been analyzed and you recognize that folks are not safe trying to run to our buses, or, you know, all of these things that they have to do, there's no sidewalks. Can that be a county incentive project that will motivate cities to participate?
So, from a legal perspective, I don't know that we can have, and I'd have to, you know, look over to Nathaniel and Drew about, you know, a sidewalk-only type of, you know, initiative, if that would be eligible. I know sidewalks as part of a larger connectivity and transportation effort are, you know, that is an interpretation that I believe we're comfortable with now, but I will turn to the attorneys.
We don't have to talk about it today, right now, okay? Because Mayor needs to move on.
I do, no, thank you.
We do need to move on, but I, I do want to say that whatever we're, we're talking about now, I need to understand, and I think we all do, that the original thing was 10% going to municipalities. Okay, so now, we've said already, we were giving over 10%, and now we're talking about things. So, how does that impact the rest of all the projects, and what are we legally allowed to do? I think it's another discussion, not today necessarily, but I'm just saying, it's, needs to be cleared up.
Absolutely, and what I, and all of this conversation, just to give you some comfort into the rest of the board, these conversations are still with the, the same size of the pie. It's what can be done within that slice of the pie, not to expand it beyond. I just, so it's flexibility within that slice.
Okay, we're going to move on.
Fair enough.
This is the last, on this...
Drew, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, on the certex.
On the certex, okay. I think with Nathaniel, do you need Nathaniel here? Okay, thank you, Nathaniel.
Couple of things on that. I do think with the shuttle, with regard to the shuttle, I think because we're paying for it all, and we're doing the operations, and I think it's, I hate to think, but it may be getting taken for granted. I mean, that's, that's a lot of money that's going into that, that is a tremendous addition to our system. And, you know, from the city's point of view, I know city, some cities couldn't do it without us doing that. And I think that we hold on to that focus, because that is a tremendous asset to doing that. And I know, and right now, it is part of that 10%, but we're paying all of that, and that's a good, that's a good thing, you know? So, I, I hope we'll hold on to that focus. I know that cities want us, having been a city commissioner, every city would love somebody to pay for all of their maintenance and potholes and everything else, and sidewalks. But that is part of the city, a city's responsibility. When we did the certex, we promised the citizens, our main thing was to, was to, you know, enhance mobility and alleviate congestion. That was our, those were our two guiding lights there, and that's what we should be kind of keeping our focus on. The, I had a couple of questions, real quick. On the, on the fiber optic is now being put all over the place. Are we, are we being able to use that fiber optic in other, using it beyond just transportation parts, being able to use it for sensors of other things like wa, you know, water, groundwater depth and things like that? Are we able to do that? Are we doing that?
So, we're not doing that just yet, I don't think. I know that we are looking towards that. We are, we're analyzing that, and I know part of the MAP program, we have sensors and resilient environment, we're talking about some, and in traffic engineering, as are coming to my mind. So, we have a lot of activity looking at that. Tony, do you want to? Thank you, Tony Huey.
I mean, I just don't want us to lose that opportunity.
Yep, thank you, Tony.
Because, because it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity.
You're definitely correct, it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I just want to describe to the board some of the things that we've been doing to try to take advantage of this opportunity. When we installed our fiber, one of the things that we do is that we, at the same time, we also installed an additional conduit that we're, that makes it available. And it's an empty conduit, but, you know, when it's used, we can easily pull the fiber through it. And so, what we do is, is that we create the opportunity so that when situations come up, such as the sensors and, you know, that type of thing, additional broadband pushout and so forth, that becomes available. That's a great resource for the county that we have, that we're doing as part of the certex program.
So, right now, we're just allowing for the capacity?
Yeah, we, we allow for the capacity, we are able to do it whenever, you know, whenever the new ideas, the innovation comes in, that we can tag on and utilize the existing infrastructure.
Is there a reason why we don't just go ahead and put a cable in there while we're doing it?
It's, the reason we...
I mean, because it's open, the ground's open, it's, everything's there? Why not just, and let it be a dark cable for a while?
It's, it's, it's just, we could, Commissioner, but what the, what we just want to do is that if we put a cable in, shifting of the ground and so forth, there's a potential for breakage of the line in, of the cable in there. When we put the conduit in, and we, we also put in what we call a pull cable. The cable is in, there's a cable inside this empty conduit, so when we need the cable, we just pull, we just pull it through. It's a simple process.
Okay, all right. Anyway, I'm glad we're doing that.
Yep.
I, I, I know we had planned on it, but I hadn't heard.
We're doing it as, all as part of our certex program.
Real good. And to the, to the point that Senator Geller made with regard to leveraging the, the monies, I think that's absolutely, I know in our ranking, what we have not done with regard to municipal rankings, is given extra credit for leveraging when they, when there are fund, state funds or, you know, we haven't used that as, you know, that should have somebody rise to the top, because I think one of the things that we always talked about, have the certex money be leveraged in everywhere possible. And I, I'm hoping that that is part of the Third Amendment. Is that...
Looking to Nathaniel to see if, if that's included in the Third Amendment, making sure the criteria is accurate.
For the criteria, for the, for the ranking for municipal projects, is the leveraging of other funds part of that? It asks, but it isn't part of the matrix in determining the rankings.
It is, and I've got Gretchen nodding me in the back, because I recall that, but...
Okay, all right.
So, there is an extra credit, if you will, there's more weight assigned to that as a, as one of the criteria.
I was under the impression it was not. Okay, good.
Vice Mayor, I just want to make sure I understand also, so currently in the ranking, when the, this is being scored.
That is correct.
Okay, because I know we're, okay.
Yes.
Okay, and then lastly, what, one thing that is not, and I don't know how, where the funding would come from with this, SFRTA is now having over 1,000 bikes a day being put on their trains. What's happening there is now you're starting to have less room for passengers. That's a good thing. I mean, it's a good thing in terms of the mobility of it, but what's not happening is that every station, our bicycles being made available for people to get off. Consequently, they have to take their, their bike on the train. This is a, you know, an ideal way of starting to be able to broaden our, you know, our transportation possibilities. I would, it'd be good for us to start to look at that with SFRTA and find out how to, whether we, there was a, there was a B-cycle or somebody that was doing something, but it wasn't, they weren't, it wasn't working out right. So, I think we need to maybe either go back out, do an RFP, find out somebody who wants to do that, but that should be a part of this, you know, part of our plans with SFRTA, so that we're able to enhance that.
So, what I'll do is, we'll reach out to Dave Deck at SFRTA.
Yeah, he's, he's looking for it as well. He, he went over to Holland, did all the trips. He's the one who's telling me about this.
All right, well, I, we'll make sure we're, our team is, is talking.
Okay, great. Okay, that's, thanks.
Okay, anybody else? Senator Geller?
Thank you. One topic, and Ms. Lonergan may want to come up for this, but maybe it's to administration. I have consistently raised concerns, and, you know, I keep being told, "Don't worry, we're going to vote on it later, you have another chance." And I've been in government long enough to know that frequently, I'm told, "Don't worry, we'll discuss it later, we'll discuss it later, we'll discuss it later." And then we're told, "Oh, but it's too late to change, look how much time and money we've invested." So, I want you to understand, I would like Ms. Lonergan to understand, and everybody to understand, that if I don't have the opportunity to have a full and robust discussion on this, I'm going to be kicking up a lot of heels and raising a lot of objections. As, I need all of the commissioners to understand that on the light rail that we're discussing, which will disrupt traffic for construction for, I think the official number is seven or eight years, which means it'll probably be 15, for whatever decade, decade and a half that we have one lane of traffic closed on either Broward Boulevard or Oakland Park or wherever it is, that we end up with putting this, this light rail, we will be dramatically reducing capacity on that road, because we're going to be closing two lanes of traffic on a six-lane roadway. And when we're done, and you can't have the light rail until it's completed, when we're done with this, we will be able to transport less people after the rail is in place, then we will lose one lane of traffic each way, and under the undoubtedly optimistic projections from transit, we are going to be able to transport less people in the light rail than the amount of veh, of what my unit of measurement, BIS, butts in seats. We will be transporting less butts in seats when we are done. be transporting less butts in seats when we are done and the light rail is complete than we are able to transport today because of the loss of one lane in each direction. I want every commissioner to understand that, that what we're doing will be, after we spend 83.4 gazillion dollars, we will be transporting less people than we can now if we close a lane of traffic. So I have been advocating for a long time that I'm never voting for transporting less people than we can now. I want to be able to transport more people than we can now. I believe the best way of doing this, and I've continued to say this, is by robustly increasing the number of buses, and I've, I have the South Florida Regional Planning Council, which I chair, working on this and on TOD, for us to be looking at, there's other cities where buses and other countries where buses go every five, six, seven minutes, where you have the either app or electronic signs that it's telling people, guess what, we are, your next bus will be here in 3 minutes and 22 seconds. They can have shelter. It is unconscionable that in Broward County, if we have somebody working in Water Hill or Waterdale Lakes, and they're working on the beach, and they have to rely on public transit, that'll, can take them two hours or longer each way to get the buses from wherever, Water Hill, Waterdale Lakes, over to the beach. I think that we should be concentrating on upgrading our bus system. And Corey, you've been doing a lot in that area with the express buses, the rapid transit buses, and I congratulate you on that part of it. And I'd like us to do more on that. I have no problem with putting light rail in place if, if we're not closing the lanes of traffic. I recognize that would make light rail slower, but that means we will be able to transport more people instead of less people. So at some point in time, if we don't have a robust discussion on this, you've seen me as a very good friend and ally, you don't want to see me fighting you on this because you know my abilities to fight you on these issues. So there better be a full and robust discussion on this topic at some point before we're told it's too late to change our mind on this.
Wait, I was hoping, I was hoping Mr. Geller can express how he really feels.
Madam Mayor, if you may.
I have expressed it repeatedly, Commissioner.
I was just going to say, I was just going to say, we have heard this story repeatedly. Thank you.
So...
County administrator.
Thank you. And I welcome the conversation, Senator Geller. So, so as, in the context of the entirety of the transportation network system, we are absolutely not at the point to have a full and robust conversation about light rail going down Broward. Before we even get there, or anywhere, right, so for light rail. So we have, while there are many projects that have, and we, we believe and that there are, there is independent utility, they all interconnect to a larger initiative, a larger transportation network, and a larger system. That includes the, some of the very things you talked about, the bus rapid transit. The very first one that's in this budget is, in the primo program, is Oakland Park Boulevard. Well, that might also, you know, when you have successful BRTs, that might look a little different than what we just think of, you know, in order to have a lane with a light or what have you, guess what has to happen? Either the road needs to expand, or there's, there's something done with the lane of traffic. So, but that is part of the BRT conversation. When we're fully into the analysis and the consulting work, that will be brought to you all. And so that's one segment. Talking about Broward commuter rail, that's commuter rail, but that's gonna bring something up to the central part of our county. And then, then we've got the first phase of light rail, which before we, before we get to the second or third phase, which is where you're talking about, we gotta have the first one done, and that's gonna be the connector between the ports and, and the convention center. We can't even think about how we connect that to downtown to then go out west until that phase is done. So, and in the perfect world, we would have BCR South done, we'll have the light rail, the first phase, which is the connectors at the port. And then we get downtown and we look at, you know, going out west and to connect that. And we're also gonna hopefully someday get across New River, and, and then we'll have another opportunity to go north. So all of these things, while they are independent utilities, they will enhance the transportation network that we have. And so at each stage of those projects, those independent projects, we will have those conversations. So I hope I satisfactorily tied, connected all the dots.
As long as we have them before, I'm told it's too late to change it anymore.
And, no.
I think she robustly explained it, okay? Thank you. Okay.
But it also should be a robustly consensus outcome. Now, any one of us have the abilities to railroad a rail, but it has to be a consensus to get this going. I think you hit it on the head when you said, "If you don't start somewhere, we go nowhere. We've been here before. We don't want to stay stagnant. This town is growing. We must keep growing, keep thinking outside of the box on how do we get from one place to the other?" And when you look at transportation, public transportation, you're talking about people who are not in this room. You're talking about the people that service the TDT and all that stuff, people who service the hotel industries. How do we get them back and forth to work? Not the senator and not McKenzie.
And the answer is not putting them on I-95 or, or 595.
But the I-95, express lanes, when we thought that was gonna be crazy, but you got all these lanes now dumping traffic onto Broward, it works. It doesn't back up.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, there are people out west that are, that are calling for the same things.
I agree.
And saying, "You have done nothing each west."
I agree, but we have to start somewhere, even with the senators in the room, but you probably won't be here when we have that discussion.
Bikes and walkers, Madam Mayor.
Right.
Madam Mayor.
The time comes, right.
Madam Mayor, just one briefly.
All right, last question before we break for lunch.
Because you are putting people on the road, you're asking folks to walk a little bit more, you're asking folks to get on their bikes, you have bikers, bicycles, and pedestrians on a sidewalk. Right now, we didn't anticipate that, but that's what we're seeing, those of us who walk. So we have to also make sure we have sidewalks to get folks from the inner side of communities out to the main road to connect to all of this awesome transportation we're thinking about. We have to take care of sidewalks and get people to be safe while walking, and they're not safe right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.